All right, ladies and gentlemen, we all set? Call the meeting to order. Good evening, everybody. It's good to see everybody tonight. It's nice to see people here. So if you would, I'd like to remind everybody to please silence your electronic devices, including us. Very good. And if you would, please stand and join us at the invocation of the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear God, as we meet this evening as a governing body, we ask for your guidance and direction. We are blessed to be living in this amazing city and wonderful country. Provide us with wisdom and direction to conduct business this evening for our community. And we ask you to provide comfort to those in need. We ask you to protect those who protect us. And we ask you to protect those that serve in our military, to protect the freedoms which you have blessed us with. We pray for peace in all the places we live and work, and we give you thanks for that. And in all the many names we call you, we say, amen.
For divisions to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, and good evening again. Our first order of business is a proclamation. I'd like to call Cheryl Edwardson, Teresa Artuso, and Carrie West from Tampa Pride to the podium.
Okay.
Well, we're happy to have two of you. So first of all, I'd like to welcome you and thank you for coming. We're happy to have you here. And I'll read our proclamation. It says, "Whereas lesbian, gay, bisexual, and transgender Pride Month is celebrated nationwide each year in the month of June, and whereas LGBT Americans still face discrimination despite several United States Supreme Court decisions that impact LGBT rights in a positive way, and whereas we recognize that it takes a collaborative effort among residents to promote inclusion, unity, tolerance, and we stand with the LGBT community in the struggle to ensure equal treatment for all people, and whereas Temple Terrace will continue to be a city where all people, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or gender expression, are treated with dignity and respect, and whereas Temple Terrace does hereby recognize and salutes that diversity and welcome and embrace the inclusion of all members of the LGBT community as part of what makes Temple Terrace an amazing community. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2021 as LGBT Pride Month." Ladies, would you like to say anything?
Thank you. Thank you.
Very good.
You have to get a photo.
Oh, yes. Well, I haven't been up for many days.
She likes us to stand right up there.
Okay, okay. That's a great thing.
I'll try my best. But don't put me to the test, okay? We have a doctor and a fire chief in the house here, so.
A lot of mouth-to-mouth resuscitation.
You might want to go with the doctor on that. Next, we have a proclamation for National Public Works Week. Public Works, Public Utilities Director Troy Tinch. Good evening, Troy. It says, "Whereas public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities, and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and well-being of the people of Temple Terrace, and whereas these infrastructure, facilities, and services could not be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals, who are engineers, managers, employees at all levels of government and the private sector, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Temple Terrace to gain knowledge of and to maintain a progressive interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2021 marks the 61st Annual National Public Works Week, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, slash, Canadian Public Works. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by the virtue of the authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby set aside May 16th through 23rd as National Public Works Week." Thanks, Mr. Tinch. Would you just like to say anything?
I would, actually, if I could, just to take a couple of minutes of your time. I know we have a long agenda, so I'll try and keep this short. I think a lot of folks know what we do. They see what we do, but they don't, well, actually, they don't get to see it directly sometimes. And I think that it's important that we indicate that we're out there working. I think for so many is the phone call that I have a broken water line, or that there's a pothole in the street, and they go on about their day. Next thing they know, the water line is fixed. Within short order, the pothole is filled. They put their garbage out at the curb, it is taken away. And I think a lot of what happens kind of happens behind the scene. You know, we have fleet management. Those folks are working every day very hard to ensure that our fleet stays up and running 24/7 through 65. And I think that that's very important. And I think so many times, individuals don't get to see that in action. They just know that it gets done. And I guess in short order, if you don't see us out there and it gets done, then we're doing our jobs. But we do work hard. I consider myself, I'm very proud to be part of that group. I'm even prouder of the individuals that go out every day and get that work done. They are the backbone of the city, in my opinion. And I think it's important that we do show that recognition to them, that we appreciate that hard work that they go through every day. So thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
One more. So we have a proclamation for 2021 National Water Safety Month. I believe we have a guest, Timothy Bennett, is here with us? Good. The outreach, Mr. Bennett is the outreach coordinator for the Children's Board of Hillsborough County. Welcome. We've seen you here before.
Yes.
Well, it's welcome back. It's good to see you. So whereas the City of Temple Terrace recognizes that providing formal swimming lessons and water safety education for children and their caregivers ensures the health and well-being not only of our children, but for all residents, and whereas, as a community, we understand the essential role that protecting our children from 100% preventable death from accidental drowning is everyone's responsibility, and understand the vital importance of providing access to water safety education and programs to all families and individuals of all ages, whether owners of private schools, users of public swimming facilities, visitors to water parks, beaches, lakes. And whereas, we recognize the significant investment made by the Children's Board of Hillsborough County in the Children's Board Mobile Swim Program, which provides swimming lessons and water safety education by bringing lifeguards and swim instructors into apartment complexes and neighborhood association pools to teach lifesaving skills to the children in those communities, as well as Safe Kids Greater Tampa for providing ongoing education to prevent needless child drowning deaths. And whereas, we recognize that it takes a collaborative effort among neighbors, nonprofit organizations, community groups, first responders, faith-based organizations, elected officials, schools, businesses to be advocates for water safety education. Now therefore, I, Andrew Ross, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Temple Terrace, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2021 as Water Safety Month. Mr. Bennett, do you like to say a few words?
Yes, absolutely. Just briefly, I just wanted to like mention, in 2019, according to the Hillsborough County Medical Examiner, there was nine child deaths due to drowning. In the last six years, there's 80 children under the age of eight years of age have drowned in Tampa Bay. Those drownings included Hillsborough County, Pasco, and Pinellas County combined. Drowning kills more kids under the age of one to four than any other cause. The good news is that this is a 100% preventable child's death. We strongly recommend parents and caregivers designate water watchers. All caregivers watching children that's around water should eliminate their distractions. So no testing, no playing video games, no reading, and not, no talking on the phone. We make this recommendation because children drown silently, and they can drown for as little as 20 seconds. And another tip I would like to add is that water safety whistles is another option. And then also make sure that we have barriers when we're working around water, like make sure you have door alarms, locks, and pool fences. That way you can keep your kids from accessing the water. And lastly, I would like to just say that get your child enrolled in former swimming lessons, according to the American Academy of Pediatrics. Former swimming lessons for children under the ages of four will cut out the risk of them drowning by 88%. So that's really good. Definitely reach out to our Family Resource Centers. You can reach out to the YMCA or the Aquatic Center to get swimming lessons. Our Family Resource Centers definitely can help with that. If you come to one of them, we have one here in Temple Terrace. It's a beautiful location. It's new, it's only been open for about a year now here in Temple Terrace. So come and see us. And I'll just say thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members.
Okay, I proclaim that the proclamations are over. So we now have presentations. First is Dr. Brooke Shepherd. As you, many of you know, Dr. Shepherd is the medical director for our Temple Terrace Fire Department. She's here to present a brief update on COVID-19 concerns. Welcome, doctor. Good to see you back.
Yes. Thank you for the invitation. Thank you, Mayor Ross, city council members, City Manager Stevenson for asking me to be here today and give you all a little COVID update. Before we do that, I would like to acknowledge that this is EMS Week, and I know I'm extremely proud of my affiliation with the Fire Department here in Temple Terrace, which, as you know, also provides our EMS services for the citizens of this city. And they do an excellent job. And I hope that when you see them around the city this week at the station, or just around, out and about, or at Publix getting groceries, that you'll tell them thank you for what they do. As far as our COVID update, I feel like we need to take a moment to reflect on the last year, because we have come so incredibly far the last year. This time last year was, for all of us, an incredibly challenging time personally and professionally. I know for myself, as an emergency medicine physician, this was, has been the most challenging professional time in my 15-year career as an emergency medicine physician, medical director of an emergency department, and the Fire Department. There was so much we did not know, there was so much fear, there was so much concern. And, you know, I don't, I feel like we have to reflect and know that, and take credit for what we, how we've come, how far we've come in the last year. You know, when this started, if I wanted to order a COVID test on someone in the emergency department, I had to call the Health Department and get permission, and it took a week or more to come back. And now you can go to any number of pharmacies and testing sites. You can buy your own test kits at CVS to do at home. We know how to protect ourselves from this virus. We know how to treat patients with COVID. And we know what makes you a high risk for serious complications from this virus. And really, the star in all of this is the vaccination rollout. Here we are a year later, and we have three highly effective and safe vaccinations, which I'll speak to a little bit more in a second. As far as in Florida right now, we're definitely seeing a decline, as we are nationwide, in new infections and deaths, which is wonderful. At a peak, we were seeing upwards of 19,000 new infections a day in Florida, and now we're down to just under 2,000. And death rates, we, at its peak, we were seeing over 200 people die a day in Florida from COVID, and now we're at around 50 a day. And that's certainly improvement, certainly something to be celebrated. Those are still 50 people that are dying every day, and 50 people that are leaving family and friends behind. And as an emergency medicine physician who takes care of these patients every single day, I will tell you that it's incredibly disheartening, because most of those 50 people at this point did not need to die, because if they had been vaccinated, they would not have. I know that in the last few weeks, we've had a lot of confusion. A lot of things have come out from the state, our state governor, as well as CDC guidelines related to masking. And I think that's just an example of one more frustration we've all felt in the last year. You know, there's been so much back and forth, so much, you know, information that changes, and that's expected. This is a virus we've never seen before. We're learning about it. We've learned so much, and we still have more to learn. And this CDC guideline that came out last week that states that those of us that are vaccinated no longer need to wear masks in most settings was appropriate, and I think welcome. And when the vaccines rolled out initially, there was a lot of frustration, because why should I get vaccinated? I still have to wear this silly mask. But we needed to have a little more information to know and safely give that guidance that we can all unmask if we've been vaccinated. Because now, here we are, five months into the vaccination, the public vaccination, we have 124 million people in this country that have chosen vaccination, and we know that they are incredibly safe and incredibly efficacious. And that's why we can now take the masks off in the right setting. But now we come to a new challenge, because now we have to rely on society, and we're all in the honor system here. And those of us that are unvaccinated need to continue to wear masks and continue to protect themselves and protect others. So, and of course, we need to continue to practice good hand hygiene and physical distancing as we've been doing. You know, we have seen in this pandemic that those measures, the simple measures of masking when you're not vaccinated, good hand hygiene, and physical distancing do help prevent the spread of this infection and everything else. Because I will tell you, most of you probably haven't had many colds the last year, and there's a reason for that. It's because we're doing all this, right? We don't want to do this for the rest of, for every year, but it certainly worked for this year. It's incredibly important that we remain vigilant, because another thing that we've all learned as we've all become little virologists over the last year is that viruses mutate and variants form. This is nothing new. This is how they have worked. This is how they continue to go on and spread. But when, the more infections that spread, the more variants occur. And we know, and there's still concern, that variants will occur that will make the vaccinations that we have less efficacious. So it's extremely important that we continue to remain vigilant to decrease the rate of new infections, and therefore decrease the variants. So on to vaccinations. So we now have over a year of data with the COVID and Pfizer vaccines. The trials started in March of 2020 with these vaccinations. We had the Phase 3 trials over the summer. We started vaccinating the general public in December, and we have five months or more of general public vaccination. We know these are incredibly safe vaccinations and incredibly efficacious. A couple months after the Pfizer Moderna, we had the rollout of the Johnson &amp; Johnson. The Johnson &amp; Johnson is a different modality of the way that it works, similar to the AstraZeneca vaccine in Europe. And we have seen some complications with those vaccines, with some clotting. Patients who get the vaccine who then form clots shortly thereafter. It's incredibly small number of people, but it's important to know, and if you're at risk for clots, or you have concerns about that, then don't choose the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Choose the Pfizer or the Moderna, which we do not see those complications with and are actually more efficacious. Right now, about 33% of Floridians are fully vaccinated, and we know we're seeing a decline in Florida, as well as nationwide, in the rates of new vaccinated, people willing to get vaccinated. That was expected. Those of us that were very eager to get vaccinated and excited got vaccinated early on, and now we have another segment of the population who's still on the fence about whether they should get vaccinated. So the rate of new vaccinations is going down. And so Hillsborough County is going to change kind of their focus on how you get a vaccination moving forward. Over the next few weeks, you're going to see the large vaccination, like parking lot sites are going to start closing, and you're going to start seeing more and more vaccines getting pushed into the pharmacies, pushed into the doctor's office, pushed into the clinics. You're going to see pop-up vaccination sites. They're going to be working with Hillsborough County Schools, private schools, and charter schools to set up vaccination sites in the schools over the summer to get those kids vaccinated that are now eligible for the 12 and up Pfizer vaccine. There is still ample opportunity to get vaccinated. It's incredibly easy. Last week, Wednesday night, when the CDC finally approved the Pfizer for the 12 and up, I got online, I registered my son. He got his first shot the next day here in Temple Terrace at CVS. It was incredibly easy, fast, and efficient. There's really no excuse at this point not to get vaccinated as far as convenience. So we know the vaccines protect you from getting COVID. We know that they are incredibly efficacious at protecting you from getting severe disease and death. Some people will still get COVID if they're vaccinated. It's not 100%. Nothing is. But it's incredibly efficacious. And we know that if you do get the vaccine and you do get COVID, you're going to have a mild illness, okay? Much better than the serious cases I see every day in the emergency department, which at this point are preventable. So the challenge now is pushing forward with vaccination, still encouraging those who have not gotten vaccinated to get vaccinated. What is their motivation to get vaccinated? Mine was, I don't want to get COVID. I don't want to get really sick. Maybe for somebody else, it's that they want to travel. Maybe they want to not have to take off time from work if they have to quarantine, because now many employers are not giving COVID leave anymore. If you're deemed to be quarantined, you're going to have to use your own vacation time or sick leave or PTO. Well, that might be the motivation for some to get vaccinated. I know for my son, it's he wants to go play inside with friends, okay? He's been playing outside for the last year. He's ready to play inside. So he is very motivated to get a shot. He was ready to line up and get his shot last week. So we need to continue to push for vaccinations, and we need to continue to be vigilant with our prevention measures that we're doing, hand hygiene, social distancing, and wearing a mask if you're not vaccinated. The predictions for how quickly we'll get through this epidemic are now stretching out even longer, because we have kind of taken a step back. People are not wearing masks that should be, and people are not getting vaccinated that can. And so this is going to spread out for many months longer than it really would have unless we continued with these measures. So please, if you haven't gotten vaccinated, please strongly consider vaccination, talk to people about it, get good information and valid information, and make that choice for yourself to prevent you from getting this really nasty virus. Does anyone have any questions?
Council members, we have questions. I would remind everybody, we have a lengthy agenda, so let's try to keep it. Council member Abel?
You answered most of my questions, but one of them is about younger children, younger than 12. Do you have an idea of the timeline until they can get their vaccinations?
Right. So they're estimating probably the September, October timeframe. Initially, they were saying 2 to 11, and now they're actually pushing it down possibly to even six months to 11, six months old to 11. So I'm hoping by the time school starts, in the first couple of months of school, we'll be able to vaccinate that group as well.
And I have another question, too. And that's, can people who have gotten vaccinated, is there any way for them to transmit the virus to other people? Is that likely or very unlikely?
So if you, if you get COVID and you're vaccinated, and you have symptoms of COVID, like a cough, okay, shortness of breath, then you could spread the virus, yes. But most people that we're seeing that have been vaccinated, who are getting COVID, are either asymptomatic or incredibly mild, like they just feel tired, they have a fever. Most are not having the respiratory issues that we're seeing with the unvaccinated population. Thank you. You're welcome.
Did I see other hands?
Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, doctor. The next presentation is by the Chief Executive Officer of HART, Ms. Adalie LaGranne. Welcome, Ms. LaGranne. It's good to have you here tonight.
Well, thank you. It's my pleasure to be here. I'm sorry that I've ran out a couple of times and didn't know how to use the door. So that's something I have to learn up on. But as you can imagine, working in the space of public mobility is a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week type of job, similar to yours, Mr. Mayor, and as well as Vice Mayor. So you know that when duty calls, you have to take the call. So again, my apologies for going in and out of the meeting, but I am happy to be here tonight to just share with you that, you know, very excited about the opportunities that we have in Hillsborough County, as well as in Temple Terrace, to advance public mobility for the community. I started this job here in January of this calendar year, so it was my out-of-COVID job. Similar to the last presentation, I was looking forward to engaging with people outside, inside, instead of just being outside. So I have a new team of friends that I'm working closely with, and we're doing the work of the community, which is to ensure that we're providing the best access possible to places where people want to go, and where places, places where people need to go. So today, I'm just here to listen. I understand that you may have some questions for me, and I hope to be able to answer them as thoroughly as possible. I also have two colleagues with me here this evening, our PIO, Ms. Carson Chambers, as well as our Chief Customer Experience Officer, Ms. Terry Wright. So they're also here, and just wanted to introduce them to you as well, to let you know that HART has many people who are concerned about the community and want to hear your voice and document your concerns. It's hard for me to talk to you, as well as document what you're saying, so that we can go back to the office, and if there's something we need to follow up on, we'll be prepared to do that as well. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to you to address any questions that you may have, or if there's anything you'd like me specifically to touch on, I can do that as well.
Council members? I get to ask my questions. I was going to say, you get the inside track here. Council members? Council member Abel?
I read an article in The Times, I guess at the end of April, and it was about redlining, about how some, some routes are being cut due to a lack of drivers. And I, I know there's a driver shortage, and I was wondering, I mean, what can we do to help? I know you all need to fill those positions. What can we do?
So a couple of things. First, you know, we have to talk about terminology, right? So redlining, the terminology in and of itself has a negative connotation. For those of you who are like me, who know about planning or development, that's terminology that, you know, denotes that you are taking away the opportunity for people to live in communities that they wanted to live in. So that's one thing that we have to work on. When I say "we," I mean, you know, internal to, not only HART, but within the transit industry. So that's one. I would say, you know, there are several trips that are missed, and some of the reasons for the missed trips are associated with the lack of operators. And that's a problem that we're having across the country, right? Unemployment rates are, you know, lower than they were in the past. They started ticking up a bit, but they're still relatively low. People are in positions where they can choose to get jobs that they want, especially if the wages are fairly low. And that's what we're dealing with. You know, our operators are currently being paid, especially the new operators, at $13.27 an hour. So if you have a lot of expectations, if there's a lot of stress on you to dealing with the public, it makes it difficult for you to decide to come every day when you can go to Walmart and not have to deal with the public in that kind of capacity and still make the same wage. So that's one thing that we have to address as far as the wages, which we are. At our last board meeting, we made an announcement that we are in a position to pay our entry-level bus operators at a rate of $15.25 an hour, which is a $2 an hour increase, which is definitely a better wage for our operators than they're currently getting. So I'm hopeful that with that increase, that we'll see a tick in the right direction, but that won't solve all of our issues. So I'll say that's one thing. The other is that we also have to design routes that are based on the number of operators we currently have. And I think there was an expectation that we would have more operators at this time, and we don't, you know, COVID- and we don't, you know, COVID is here as well, so some operators decided to go in a different direction. So what we're doing on June thirteenth is, I would say, revising our routes to make sure that we have the right number of operators so that we don't miss any of those trips and that we can provide reliable service. I recognize that the community would prefer to have more frequent service, but I think it's at a minimum, it is our expectation and the community's expectation that we provide service that's reliable. So if we say the bus is going to be there at eight oh three, it needs to be there at eight oh three, and that's what we're working to accomplish. And then lastly, you said, what can we do? So I'm going to take that "we" to me all of year around the dais. And that is, you know, to one, I would say elevate the brand of a bus operator. You know, I tell people, you know, when you go to the airport and you're waiting on the flight and you're sitting, and then you see the flight crew walk by, no matter what you're doing, you kind of stop and look at them with this, like, look of awe, right? Here comes the folks that are going to make sure I get there safely. But we don't do that for bus operators. And they deal with the community, like the pilots, and they get in and they go in that little room and they close the door, and you don't see them again. And then maybe if you're fortunate, depending on where you're sitting on the plane, you'll see them when they scoot out of that little door, right? But the bus operator tells you where the stop is. If you need some help, they tell you, ma'am, this stop is coming up. Get ready. They wait. If you need special assistance, they stop and adjust the lift for you. And then sometimes they deal with people who are having a horrible day, and they still have to be pleasant for the next person they pick up. And I say it's up to us, we. We have to make sure we elevate the brand, elevate the role, and elevate the position of serving the community in that capacity. So that's something that we can do that doesn't cost any money. It can be some campaigns. It can be talking to the community. It could be, you know, advocating for a position working in public transit. And then, of course, supporting with dollars so that we have additional funding to, again, attract and retain the right types of operators and then provide more service to the community. So great question. Thanks for asking that.
Thank you. And also, thanks for educating me about the term redlining. I saw it in the newspaper, and I didn't understand that it was not the right term for...
Right. And it's something that they use in the industry. And I think this is, you know, it's a good time for us today as a nation, as a global community, to understand the significance of words and how we use them. And that just use the right words. You know, it doesn't change the meaning of it if we just say we missed a trip. So let's start using that. And if people understand that, I think everybody would understand, we missed a trip, what that means without having to define it. So thanks for the opportunity for me to explain it.
Mr. Schistler?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. LaGranne, thank you for coming out. I do appreciate it. To your point regarding the elevation of the position of the operators, I don't know if anybody follows HART on Facebook, but there was a very, very excellent video this more, today on Facebook. I don't, I saw it for the first time today that talks about an operator following her and her morning routine to actually getting on the bus. It was really, it was really quite good. And it was, if everybody has that dedication, we have a good fleet. So that's, that was well done.
I appreciate that you saw that, and thank you.
That was good. Thank you.
I see another proclamation coming.
Any other questions for Ms. LaGranne?
No, thank you.
We really appreciate you and your staff for coming out tonight. Thank you very much, taking time out. Hopefully, we will not be strangers. We don't need to expect you to take time out every month or so, but it'd be good to see you periodically, to come and visit and keep in touch. Let us know what we can do to support you, and we'll let you know the same thing. And that's how, that's one of the things that we do really well in this community. So thank you very much.
For the invitation, I look forward to coming back.
Thank you.
Now you know how to get to Temple Terrace.
Yes, I do.
So the next item on the agenda is a parking enforcement hearing officer appointment. So I have to go off script here a little bit before you, don't fill out your ballots just yet, okay? We have a decision to make before the decision, right? And that is this. When we initially heard this presentation from the city attorney about this, we approved to have one citizen volunteer serve in this capacity. We have two applicants, as you well know, and there's been some discussion about whether the council would like to have two people appointed to this role, thereby providing us a little backup in case something happens to the one. And the one thing that is a little unique, well, not little, it's unique about this because we, with our code enforcement board and the other boards, they're boards of people like this. So if something happens to one person, the meeting still happens and the people still get due process. This position being one person, if something were to happen to that person, there's not like another judge to take over the caseload. That hearings would have to be prolonged or postponed. And so I don't, I, this is a decision that I think is rightfully for the council to make, right? And you have the city attorney here to discuss, you have the city manager here to discuss. I think we need to first make that decision, and then whatever the result of that decision is, we either appoint one or both of these candidates, depending on what the council's wishes are. So city attorney, I think you had some comments on that?
I think you presented it pretty fully at this point because you're right. We do have a, as with code enforcement board, it's seven people. A quorum is four, so we could be missing three people and still be able to conduct business. Plus, we have two alternate members to code enforcement board, so we could lose four of them, put the two alternates in, and still conduct business. Here, we would, only one person would be acting at a time, but if for something, you know, they might decide they would like to go on vacation at that time, they might get sick, something might come up, and we would have an extra person if you appointed two I think one of the people applying this evening is one of the alternate code enforcement board people. And that, to let you know, though, that person, if chosen, would have to then stick with this position. They could not do dual office holdings so that they would no longer be an alternate, and you'll have to appoint another alternate to the code enforcement board. But that's, that's it. You would need to make a decision whether you want to appoint two people tonight or just one.
City manager, did you want to provide comment on this?
No, sir.
No?
No, sir.
Good. Look, council members, it's, I don't, it's, yeah, Mr. Schistler?
With this being an ordinance, just point of order, would we need to go start over and have two hearings to, or two sessions to modify it?
The ordinance that created this said that we would have one person who would be hearing these cases. You would still only have one person. You're just appointing a person, you're just appointing two people so that we have, we could switch back and forth each month. We hadn't really decided what we would do with this, that one would, if you want to decide that one's the alternate person, you could do that. If you wanted it just to be them equal, I would probably suggest to the clerk and to the city manager that we just alternate, give them both work to do and alternate them each month that we would have hearings. When someone's appointed as an alternate to the code enforcement board, unfortunately, some, everybody shows up and that person ends up not getting called to do anything. So this, I think if we alternated each month, it would give both of them a chance to work. So...
Councilman, I'm sorry. Were you finished, Mr. Schistler?
What's the mechanics then of how we go forward?
Beg your pardon?
What is the mechanics of how we go forward? Point two?
You could, you could decide just to, you could make a motion that we, that you appoint two people tonight instead of one, and then hear that motion first. And then if you want to go through the process of actually filling out your ballots and voting for each, you could do that. Or a lot of times when we only have one applicant to something, you all just automatically vote for that one person. This is not to say ever that you have to even vote for the one person who's applied or for the two people who have applied. It's up to you to consider who they are and what their application says. If you don't feel that somebody is right for a job, then you don't appoint any, and we readvertise.
So I believe the, I know you're, but the mechanics of this would be, we would just need to make this decision. We wouldn't need a motion to appoint. And then after we decide what we're going to do, then we need a motion to appoint one or both of these. Councilman Chambers?
My question was, who, how do we determine who would be in charge each month? And it really hasn't been determined, but it could be alternate.
I don't know that, if you want to appoint one as an alternate, then they would obviously not be in charge each month. The regular appointed person would be in charge each month unless they were not available. This would just be a procedure that the clerk and our office would do each month to just remind the person that you're up next month. So it would not be anything that you would all have to decide. It would just be our regular, it would be a operational process, unless you chose differently.
You still have the floor?
All right. So we would, tonight, we can either go with one person as originally planned, or we could vote for two as equal rotating, or we could go with one primary and an alternate. So we have now three choices.
Correct. And I could probably come up with more choices if I really thought it through even further, but that's probably a good three to settle on.
It would be just, I mean, I don't want to get ahead of the discussion, but if we decided to go with two, I would think it would make the most sense to go back and forth each, because these people need experience doing this, too.
Exactly.
So somebody had a hand up over here. Vice man?
And thank you. That's exactly my point. I think this is brand new. We haven't done this before. We have two people who are interested. We have people who, we have people who've already served in the community, and we have the opportunity to have two people. And if we say, you know, okay, we're going to start in June, and you take June, you take July, you take August, and then the next thing you know, their schedules are changed, they can work that out with you. I mean, as long as they just go back and forth, it happens. This is, we're kind of making, they're making a lot out of maybe not necessary. I think it's a wonderful idea to have two people rather than put everything on one person. And I agree. Having an alternate means that unless, I can use the pronoun "he" since we have two he candidates, unless he comes to every meeting, the learning curve will be slow. So whenever you're ready for a motion, I think one of us should make it.
Well, I don't know that we need a motion to make the decision to appoint one or two. I think we can just do a, right? I mean, we can, we don't need a resolution to do that.
You can just make, someone can just make a motion to appoint both applicants.
Well, but that's kind of step two, because then we want to hear from the applicants because I think they're both in the Terrance.
Well, I would say do that before you make the motion.
Okay. All right. Well, fair enough, then. Well, how about we hear from the applicants? Is that a good way to proceed?
Sure.
Okay. I believe that they are both here. So we have, I don't have their names, and here we go. Mr. Jack Ritter, I know you're here. Mr. Ritter, would you like to say a few words?
Yeah.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you very much. Jack Ritter, 227 Willowick Avenue. I think most of you know me, seventy-five years in this wonderful city. And I have a friend coming in next week who I grew up with. He moved here in nineteen forty-seven, and he now lives in Venice. So going to have a good week. I have had a multitude of experiences. I think most of you know I'm retired military, twenty-eight years. I've served on God knows how many boards. I've chaired all kinds of committees in my illustrious career. Then I transitioned to being a civilian for ten years, where I was a senior executive with the Joint Chiefs, as a war planner, a lot of experience there, a lot of travel. So I've served on the code enforcement board. As one year, I served as the chairman, and I'm ready to serve again. This sounds like a challenge, and I'm up for the play ball. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ritter. And thank you again for your service. And Mr. Brandon Smith? Is Mr. Smith here? I do not see Mr. Smith here. So council members, I believe a motion would be appropriate?
I think the simple motion would be to move to appoint two representatives to fill this position. So this is now a, we have two on the board or whatever we want to call this. So that would be my motion, to have two people appointed. I'm not naming names. I'm just starting on the base, the very base that we make it.
Okay. I don't think we need a motion just to do that step. If you want to appoint both of these candidates, I think you can just make a motion to appoint both of these candidates.
Well, then I move to approve both candidates.
Second. A motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? I do have one question, and we talked about terms. So how will we accommodate an overlap so that we don't have two people turning out at the same time?
We, you and I had talked about that. We had not determined what the term of office would be. So that is now going to be up to you all to do that. My suggestion is, is that one be appointed, after you've appointed them both, I would have, you would have to make the decision, appoint one for, I would say, one year. This is all new, so don't want to get somebody feeling obligated to do this longer than that. If they want to reapply and be reappointed, that's great. And then have the second person's term expire probably one year and three months, something at least, so that it's a little staggered and we have an opportunity to bring it back to you and appoint either a new person or reappoint.
So I would ask you to consider amending your motion to appoint one candidate for a term of one year and another, and the other candidate for a term of two years. Just make it clean.
All right. In that case, I move to approve Mr. Ritter for two years and Mr. Smith for, are you saying eighteen months?
Do I just?
That's...
One year?
You make the motion.
One year. Okay.
You second that?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the amended motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No nays? I thank both these gentlemen for volunteering. This is kind of uncharted territory for us. I'm sure there's going to be a lot of learning for all of us as this moves forward, but thank you both for stepping up to help us through this. So, okay. Has everybody had an opportunity to review the meetings from our previous meeting?
Approved.
Motion is second. Any adjustments, corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Next item is persons wishing to be heard on items not listed on the agenda or items on the consent agenda. Three-minute time limit is imposed on all comments from the public. We do ask that speakers come to the podium, state their name and their city of residence. We do like to assure all members of the public that your comments are taken seriously. The city manager, the directors in attendance, listen very closely to your comments, and we do follow up on your concerns. So I do have one request so far to speak from Mr. David Bruss. Welcome, Mr. Bruss. Good evening, sir.
I take it the masks are optional to state?
Yes, sir.
Yes, David Bruss is my name. I live at 12405 Pampas Place. It's in Rain Tree. If you don't live on Soaring or, you know, in Rain Tree, you've never been anywhere near my house. So anyway, I live right adjacent to one of the retention basins that are there. The farthest one that's west on Soaring is the one that I'm, my property is adjacent to. So anyway, there's a chain of fence around the entire retention basin, which is good. But it keeps the weeds from right along the fence line are, get to be a problem quite a bit. And on my side in particular, I'm close to the water line, so a lot of times during the year, the guys that come and mow around can't get to there. So, and I can understand that. So two Fridays ago, there was a crew out there doing their job, and I was, I managed So two Fridays ago, there was a crew out there doing their job, and I was, I managed to flag one of the guys down, and I asked him, is there any chance you can come across my fence line here? Because the weeds are getting, I can't even see through a lot, a lot of places. And I says, I understand that, you're, they just had weed whackers out there, and some of these, now brush have three quarters of an inch diameter shoots, so. Anyway, I said, and I'd be glad to do it if you could just let me have access and come in there, and you wouldn't have to do it. And he said, well, no, it's our job, and we'll see what we can do. So anyway, I went inside, did some trading for a little while, came back out, and lo and behold, they had cleaned off the entire fence line. So I wanted, my main reason for coming here was to say thank you. I'm sure their, their supervisor and bosses probably don't know, but the boss's boss is here, so maybe he'll relay those comments down the line. So if I have one more minute, I would just like to say one other thing. I listened to the good doctor here talk about the vigilance that we need to keep on wearing masks, et cetera, et cetera. As much as I can appreciate that, I've been vaccinated, and there's a point to which that becomes not a good idea. Not that we shouldn't all do what we can to protect ourselves, but if we're gonna be a community, community engagement, masks do not foster community engagement. They kinda prohibit that. So when the CDC says that, hey, we can, we have, all the people that have wanted to be vaccinated can be vaccinated, I think it's time to drop the requirement for wearing masks wherever you can. If nothing else, it's the mental anguish and the depression that I think a lot of citizens actually have that nobody hears about. The media doesn't talk about that. The medical people don't talk about that. You should probably have a psychiatrist that comes in and gives the counterpoint to not having to wear masks as much as some people would like to advocate. Now, I'm a citizen, I follow the policymakers, but just wanted to say that. But thank you to the city worker.
Thank you, Mr. Bruss, for taking time out of your schedule to come and share that story with us. Thank you very much. And I'm sure that will, that will reach our, our employees, I'm sure, so. Is there other, are there other members of the public who wish to address the council at this point? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sir, thank you for catching me. Good evening.
Good evening, good evening.
This is Mr. Radio Voice.
Yes, I get that a lot as well.
Good afternoon.
Welcome, gentlemen.
I'm Tyrone Rem, Coach Rem at Greco Middle School here in Temple Terrace.
I'm Emery Colvin, resident here in Temple Terrace.
And we're a little bit exhausted of, working at the middle school is not easy, so bear with us. I would just like to say, got an opportunity this past weekend, we had a, we're into the sports industry, and we had an opportunity to give back to my school. I've been at Greco Middle School for eight years. We had a professional event. I'm also the CEO of Rank Up Athletics. Coach E is also the head coach of Rank Up Athletics. We're in the industry of opportunity. I'm really big on the youth, we're big on the youth, we're big even with the adults, from mentoring and giving them opportunity. And what we had this past weekend, it was a great, beautiful atmosphere. It was another professional football game, not a semi-pro, we're a level above semi-pro, to give guys and young men opportunity at a professional career, and to make it on a professional level from NFL all the way down to an arena. But the big thing that we're so concerned and big on, big on is, is the community. It was a great turnout. I got a chance to meet this lovely young man right here, Mr. Shisler. I think if you ever pass by Greco Middle School, it was a beautiful, beautiful site. It gives the kids and everyone in the community that's been closed down for quite some time due to COVID, et cetera. And whatever we can do for the community, I feel like we can bring a lot to the table as far as entertainment. We wanna be one of the main tiers here in Temple Terrace and in this particular area to provide professional football. I've had an opportunity to play a little bit NFL with the Oakland Raiders in 98, as well as Coach E with the 49ers. We're big in the community on the village. I'm a little old, I know I'm a young man, but I grew up old school, and I'm very keen on the village. And just the atmosphere alone, it was beautiful. A lot of people actually come out with their families, there was nice food, music. We can definitely provide this type of safe habitat for Temple Terrace, to give someone out, you all to come out with your families, to see other young men soar at what their desires and their dreams, and to see what we've done at Greco Middle School to provide a service for the, the youth, to, to inspire them. So anything that we can do for the community and whatever, you know, we can join together, I would love for Rank Up Athletics to bring some excitement. We have the Tampa Bay Buccaneers as tier one, the Tampa Bay Vipers of the XFL is tier two, Tampa Bay Tornadoes of Arena Football is tier three, and we would like to be tier four in this community if you guys allowed us to be able to provide this service for the community.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Nice to hear that.
Thanks.
Would be the Temple Terrace Tornadoes.
Yeah.
That's pretty cool. Yeah, very cool. Are there other members of the public who wish to address the council at this time? All right, I almost didn't wait long enough the first time, so. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Resolution approving the purchase of a replacement fire command vehicle and lighting package. The city manager will explain, remember, folks, this is the consent agenda. City manager, fire chief, doesn't matter to us.
I've got this, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
You've got this one, I got this one.
I got this one. You've got the next one.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's only one, one item on consent this evening. Item seven is a resolution to approve the purchase of a 2021 Ford Expedition Command Vehicle and Lighting Package. The city manager will explain, remember, folks, this is the consent agenda. The purchase will be made from Duval Ford through this Florida Sheriff's Association Contract FSA 20-VEL 28.0. Payment in the amount of $40,159 to be provided with funds from account 1601521-522.64-11 Recommendation is to approve the purchase.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Submit.
Second. Motion and a second. All those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, consent agenda is approved. Next item is a resolution approving Fire Department Strategic Plan and Standards of Response Cover. Fire Chief Ian Kemp will explain. Welcome, chief.
I'm Mayor, Council, Ian Kemp, your Fire Chief. The Fire Department first obtained international accreditation through the Commission on Fire Accreditation International in 2006, 2011, and again in 2016, the Fire Department successfully completed the process and retained its accredited, international accreditation designation. The Fire Department is currently preparing for another full evaluation and site visit later this year. The accreditation process involves three main components: a formal strategic plan, self-assessment manual, and standard of response coverage, the two of which require approval by the governing body. An update to the Fire Department Strategic Plan was completed earlier this year. The process involved members of our organization, business leaders, and members of the community. We created a vision for our department's future while developing the necessary procedures and operations to, to achieve that future. We identified the Fire Department's long-term goals and objectives while determining the best approach for achieving those goals and objectives. The Standard of Response Cover document serves as an analysis of response data, community risks, staffing, response, and employment methodologies. This document has been updated to include recent annexations, developments, and hazard assessments. In general terms, the document describes how, when, and why we do what we do as it relates to the department's response plan and resources. The approval of this resolution supports goal number six of your city, our future, by ensuring the Fire Department maintains the necessary resources and equipment to meet the demand of existing and future call volumes. The Fire Department staff recommends approval of this resolution that adopts the Fire Department Strategic Plan and Standard of Response Cover.
Thank you, chief. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council members, questions for Chief Kemp? Mr. Shisler.
Yes, chief. I, I enjoyed reading the strategic plan, but I did have a question regarding the, and I, I always like the SWOT analysis, but your weaknesses that you listed there, how critical are they to the overall accreditation potential, or reaccreditation potential? Or, I think you know what I'm trying to say. How, can, how badly can they hurt you in your, in your attempts for reaccreditation?
Um, that's a, that's actually an excellent question. They, they, they make recommendations every single time that they come in, usually anywhere from three to five recommendations. If there's critical recommendations, you will not get reaccredited. For example, sometimes they'll recommend increased staffing coverage, they'll recommend certain things that cost money and some that don't. We're pretty confident in that we will be reaccredited, but there will be some recommendations similar to what I just described, so that we work on them yearly, and we have to write to those every year, not just every five years, every year we have to write to them and show them what the progress is that we're making. And we have to show progress, and we have over the last 15 years of being accredited, or we won't be, be reaccredited.
Was this a self-analyse, if I may, is this a self-SWOT analysis, or was this theirs?
Uh, it's ours.
It's ours?
Yep.
So I noticed in the ones, the battalion chief.
Yes.
Is this something that we can, do we have people internally that can be elevated to cover this, or is this something that we need to go looking for? Now's budget time, now's the time to ask.
Yes, yes, I know, and the city manager does have some, some, some requests of mine in there. Battalion chief, what a battalion chief is, is it's a, it's a manager that's on 24 hours. We, we don't have that. Plant City is our same size, and usually fire stations, two stations or more have a, either a district chief or battalion chief. We're very, very fortunate that somehow all of our, our staff live in the city of Temple Terrace, and they have agreed to be on call, so they, they alternate, me included, on, on a call basis. It is not ideal, and we have talked about changing that over time. I think we could probably do a little bit of hiring and use some internal restructuring where we could, we could get that position, but, but we're getting big enough now where we really can't rely on, on people, you know, leaving their, you know, their dinner out at Carrabba's and trying to get to, to on scene quick enough to make sure that they're, they have a safety officer there and that they can take over command, so that has been a recommendation in the past.
Because the, the, the period runs from, it's a three or four-year period, if I'm not mistaken, the accreditation period?
Five years.
Five years, okay, so five years. In five years, with any kind of significant annexation, we're gonna need that third station, potentially, and at that case, then you would need that battalion chief.
100%.
Pardon me?
100%, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you. Good presentation.
Other questions for Chief Kemp?
In the same list, you know, the strengths are obvious, but the weaknesses are things that we would not know because we're not in the department. Are there things here that you are trying to put into the budget? Because exactly, Mr. Shisler is exactly right, now's the time before you go into this application process for.
Let's not go too far out of the lines, though, what we're doing tonight.
No, I'm just asking if, if, if are there any, you don't have to tell me what they are, but are there things here that you've identified priority-wise that would make a big difference?
There are, and, and the city manager has those, those suggestions. Yes, ma'am.
I'm not trying to go down a budget meeting, I promise.
Other questions for Chief Kemp? Okay, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move to approve, second.
Motion and second. Is there discussion on the motion?
No.
If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, resolution's approved. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, everyone.
Next item is the resolution approving a second modification to the 2018-2019 CDBG inter-local agreement. For the watching public, that is Community Development Block Grant, that's what CDBG means.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. On September 17th, 2019, an inter-local resolution, inter-local funding resolution for the City of Temple Terrace was provided to you for $312,487 for project year 1819. $52,080 of the amount was for project administration. On February 4th, 2020, City Council approved the first modification to increase the amount by $500,000 for additional infrastructure projects. This second modification extends the timeline for reimbursement for the $260,407 and updates two articles, 26 and 35, that the sub-recipient, us, use as a legal authorized workforce. You have done a second modification before that was provided by the county. The county later said in April that this was the wrong one, so they sent us another modification, and this is the final second modification. You will not get another modification for the 1819 inter-local funding agreement. Once this is done, and the county finally countersigns on it, we get reimbursed, we close, we're done, we're moving on.
Be careful what you promise.
I, it's public.
Be careful what you promise. Remember, under promise, over deliver.
That is true. You'll have to speak with the county if they mess this one up next time.
Okay. Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Council member questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
I move to approve a resolution approving the second modification to the 2018-2019 CDBG inter-local agreement.
A motion, a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye. Resolution's approved. Thank you, Ms. Boswell. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving an inter-local agreement with Hillsborough County for library services. Leisure Services Director Carl Langfield will explain. Welcome, Mr. Langfield.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Tonight I'm bringing a request to enter into a inter-local agreement with Hillsborough County for library operations. This is actually a renewal of the inter-local agreement that consists of Hillsborough County, City of Temple Terrace, and Plant City for library operations. This inter-local agreement is all win for the city. What it provides to the city is a vast expansion of library resources where all of the collections of the three entities are shared amongst each other. So our Temple Terrace library and the users of our Temple Terrace library now have access to the county's library collection and Plant City's library collection, and vice versa. Those additional libraries have access to our collection. The inter-local agreement with the county, the county provides to the city funding in the amount of $161,430 a year to assist in our library operations with the caveat that we provide library services to county residents in addition to Temple Terrace residents. Through the inter-local agreement, the county does all the heavy lifting to apply for the state aid grant that is provided each year, for which we get nearly about, nearly $20,000 of additional revenues for library equipment. The county provides all of the contracts for printing services. They provide us with all of the computers that are used by the patrons who use the libraries. They manage the contracts with Spectrum for the data connections. So this, this is all win. There's no cost to us to enter into this agreement, but it's all win for the city and for the users of the, the library within the city. So again, we are requesting a three-year extension of this inter-local agreement with Hillsborough County for library services. I stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Other members of the public who wish to comment on this item? Seeing none, council member, questions for Mr. Langfield? Mr. Shisler?
Sorry. Any chance of more shared funding? 161's been, it's been stuck there for about five years?
Quite some time. There's always an opportunity to ask, however, the county, they've, they've been unwilling to move from that number in, in quite some time. And, and, yeah, right. We do recognize that all of our costs go up for all the library operations, but that number has been stagnant for quite some time now.
Other questions for Mr. Langfield? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the resolution, or the resolution approving the inter-local agreement?
Submit. Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, no nays, resolution's approved. Thank you, Mr. Langfield. Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the continuing Next item on the agenda is a resolution approving the continuing contract for general asphalt resurfacing. Public Works Director for Public Utilities, Troy Tinch, will explain. Welcome back.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Again, good evening, your Honorable Mayor, City Council. Troy Tinch, Public Works Utilities Director. I'm here this evening to seek approval for the contractors that submitted under the general services contract for asphalt resurfacing. Earlier this year, staff advertised an invitation to bid number 21-006. In that invitation to bid, we had a bid packet that included four basic types of resurfacing that we were looking to do within the city. Those included Cape Seal, Double Micro, Millinery Surface, and then Full Depth Reclamation. I believe I've kind of explained all those in the past, what all those specific types of treatment options are, and range in value and type. We did receive four administratively complete bids. Our contractors that bid on this, we went through those contracts. Some of those contractors bid on all the items that were up for bid to conduct these types of activities. Some did not. But, again, they were all administratively complete. There was nothing that said that they had to bid on all the items, but the bid packet itself had to be complete. So, we were bringing forward those four specific contractors. In addition, we added some federal language into this invitation to bid that would allow us to use any of these four contractors for federally funded projects, i.e. CDBG. So, we'd be able to utilize them to do work within our CDBG communities for asphalt resurfacing, as well as minor work within our, the adjoining appurtenances, drainage appurtenances. So, we really feel like this is a good opportunity for us. It really gives the city a lot of latitude by accepting kind of that general services-type contract, very similar to what we have with the engineering contract, where we have four consultants, or in this case, four contractors, that we can identify to do work within the city for resurfacing. And it gives us that latitude, and it's also time-saving. Because if we advertise this every year, it takes about three to four months to kind of crack it through the process. Well, by doing this, we are locking these folks in for at least a two-year period. Initially, the contract is for two years, and then it has three additional one-year extensions. So, we could be looking at a five-year period of time that we would have these folks under contract to do work. So, imagine that the time savings for staff over that five-year timeframe. So, that said, staff recommends the city council authorize the city manager to execute contracts with Ajax Paving Industries of Florida, LLC, Asphalt Paving Systems Incorporated, CW Roberts Contracting Incorporated, and Preferred Materials Incorporated to conduct as-needed general asphalt resurfacing for an initial two-year term with the option of three one-year extensions. I will stand for questions, if any.
Good. Are there members of the public who wish to address this item? Good, councilmembers, I do have a question. So, this is good, particularly given the fact that paving contractors are going to be scarce here probably over the next year or two because of all the money that Hillsborough County and Tampa are spending on paving projects. My question is, we approve four companies. How do we then choose which one gets which job?
So, each of the bid items that they bid on, and again, not every contractor bid on all the bid items. So, for instance, maybe only one of the contractors bid on what it would take to do Full Depth Reclamation. So, we would, obviously, they would have been selected for the project. On items that there are multiple bids, we would look at the lowest bid, and generally we would give that contract to that individual. Now, since some of these folks we don't have a lot of experience with, if we were determined, say after the first time, that we didn't care for their, the quality of their product, we could then move up a little bit, and maybe spending a little bit more would result in a better product. So, we wouldn't always necessarily be going with the lowest bidder, but that's generally how we would work it. We would go with the lowest bidder, see what the quality of the work that they provide. If they provide a good, solid, quality item, then we would continue with that individual to the next cycle.
Thank you. Mr. Sisler? Would this in any way preclude further approvals on any subsequent projects that come forth?
Should not.
Okay.
If it's above the threshold.
Yeah, as long, I mean, so, within our established procurement policies, this approval here won't circumvent any other projects, any other approvals that have to come back to us.
This would be kind of akin to the CCNA process.
Yeah.
Again, very similar to what we did with our general services contract for engineering. We could do general services contracts, and it is my intent, actually, there's a general services contract out as we speak for flatwork, which would be concrete work, asphalt, or sidewalk work. So, I'll be bringing that forward to you probably next month, and it will be very similar in nature. And what it does is, again, it allows us to kind of have a staple of contractors at our ready, so when we have projects that we want to push out, there's not this elongated period of, okay, let's get all our bid packet together, let's advertise this, let's get the bids in, let's review them. That's all done for us. That's a one-time deal, and then you're good for the next five years.
Just to be clear on the answer to that, the answer is no. We would still have to approve projects that are...
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, so, I guess maybe I misunderstood, Mr. Sisler.
Okay.
Yeah, I still have to bring those. This is just approving the general contract?
Okay, so make sure that...
Absolutely.
Other questions for Mr. Tinch?
Well, I have a question for bids in general.
Yes, ma'am.
So, will not affect this. So, do we have some brownie points, if you will, or something that we say that, okay, these are minority-owned businesses, or these, you know, there are other things I know in federal that ask for certain things. Do we include some of those as points or things we're looking for? Local-owned or whatever?
Right, since this is not based on a point system, it's based on a bid system, there's really no opportunity for us to give additional points for local or additional points for minority. It's based on the bid. So, if they're the lowest bid, then...
Okay, just asking.
Selection factor.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Second.
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
No, thank you. I think that's a smart move.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify with aye.
Aye.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Tinch. The resolution is approved. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to adopt CU 21-01 for the conditional use permit for property located at 12902 North 56th Street. We'll open the public hearing, and I will ask the city clerk to swear in all persons who intend to testify.
He's behind you.
His public comment is not testify, is it? I don't think, no, public comment. Just if you're going to provide material... No, you still have to swear them in.
So, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Did you, did she get sworn in? She kind of half got sworn in.
Yeah.
All right.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
There we go. We want to make sure we're fully sworn.
Yeah, we know the players, so we're...
On that note, if a public comment is just to make a comment of opinion, that doesn't need to get sworn in. If the comment is really a testimony of facts, that that person is presenting to you, that person does need to get sworn in.
So, all right, I have no idea what the public comment is going to be, so should we...
True, only the person making the public comment would know that.
So, should we swear that person in or not?
She's saying no.
Okay.
It's an opinion.
Oh, if the person who's going to stand up intends to testify to some fact that they have observed, tasted, smelled, that they're presenting what they consider a fact, then they should also be sworn in.
Mrs. Rennie, the only person that knows the answer to that is you. Do you need to be sworn in or not? Okay, Madam Clerk?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
Very good. All right. Now that we've stumbled through the swearing-in process here, I'd ask city council members, Pam, do you want to poll the city council for ex parte?
If anyone who is going to be making a decision tonight has received any ex parte communication from anyone concerning this particular item, please state what that is, with whom you have had that communication, when you had that communication, and what the sum and substance of it is. If you have received anything in writing with regard to this, please provide a copy of that to the clerk so that it may be made a part of the public record, and state the same information about that in writing communication.
I have no ex parte communication to report.
I have none.
I've had none.
I've had none.
I've had none. Very good. Senior Planner Gus Carpus is patiently waiting to present.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I will tell the truth. Is my presentation up? Okay, so, what we have before us tonight is something, it's kind of revisiting a previous request. It's for conditional use for society wedding receptions. They would like to operate a wedding venue within the commercial, I'm sorry, Commercial General Zoning District, and they're also seeking a waiver from the minimum required setback from residential properties. This always works.
Is it on?
I'm sorry. No one else used it tonight, I just assumed it was on, my bad. So, the property is located at 12902 North 56th Street. That's just south of East 132nd, or 131st Avenue and west of North 56th Street. It has a future land use of commercial. Again, it's Commercial General Zoning. What the applicant is going to be doing is leasing 2,600 square foot within a multi-tenant structure located on a lot that's approximately 1.1 acres. Again, the use is permitted per the LDC as a conditional use, which requires them to go through this process. The waiver that they're seeking, the LDC states that no building or portion of a building utilized for said use shall be closer than 200 feet from any single residentially zoned or used property. That measurement is to the property line. So, I've shown this map previously. This shows you the 200-foot buffer on the west side. The subject property touches six of the residentially zoned properties. And then here's a table that I'm just showing the actual distance from the structure in which the use would be located to the actual residential structures to the west. The city has a parking requirement of one space per five seats, or one space per 200 square foot of use area, whichever is greater. In this case, there are going to be required 13 parking spaces. And then here's the site plan of the site. The dash line indicates the area that they're going to be leasing. The W's indicate where their parking would be for their businesses, so they do have, or their business, so they do have 13 spaces. Now, here's a floor plan. You'll see a blown-up one on the next one, but showing the leased area. It's going to be divided into two areas, chapel area with 24 seats and a reception area with 26 seats. So, that's where they get their 50 total. So, you can see that a little bit better on that one. So, this was before the council on February 2nd, and it was brought back, there was some concern about potential noise impacts on adjacent properties. The applicant at that time asked if they could continue the request to address those. So, on the yellow line there, that is where they are proposing to put soundproofing materials. They have submitted the information on the products, and they do comply with the building Now, being a conditional use, you add conditions, and these have been modified a little bit since the last time we met. The hours of public operation would be limited to 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 a.m., with no amplified entertainment after 10 p.m. The applicant is not going to be seeking a liquor license in this case because it would not be able to obtain one. Caterers will have their own licenses, and they're regulated under the state, so the city doesn't sign off on their licenses, but they have specific rules which will keep alcohol off-site. All alcohol that comes onto the site has to leave the site the same night. There shall be no outside service or consumption of alcohol. There shall be no outside seating or entertainment. The seating shall not exceed 50 at any time because they would be in violation of their parking requirements, and the applicant would need to comply with the noise control ordinances outlined in Section 167. So, again, the Community Development Department recommends that the city council approve the resolution and request a waiver, and that is permitted use as a conditional use in that zone, provided the conditions are adhered to. Granting the request addresses a goal in our strategic plan that promotes economic prosperity by encouraging the diversity of new retail, personal, and commercial services, offices in light industrial uses within business corridors. That's all I have at this point. I can stand for some questions. I know the applicant is here. As you see, you have some other folks that would like to speak on this.
Well, next, before we get to questions, Mr. Carpus, does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Would you like to make a presentation?
And then we'll get to questions.
No problem.
Good evening, sir, welcome.
Good evening, my name is Perry Sullivan, and I think this says it all. There's nothing that I can add to this. This is a presentation made before. The conditions of approval, we've done everything we can to try to appease everybody on what they want, and we think we did, did a fairly good job on doing everything that we were asked, okay? I don't have anything else to say.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Does the applicant, any other presentation from the applicant?
No, the actual business owner had another meeting tonight in Clearwater, and so, Mr. Sullivan is her representative.
Okay, very good. Okay, councilmembers, are there questions? This is not discussion, questions for either our staff or Mr. Sullivan, Vice Mayor.
Question. When we met last time, at the very end, it was identified that there was office space at the back of the building. Is that still there? Is that still a buffer that's in place?
Yeah, I don't know if I can go back.
I can't tell.
So, the actual, the area behind where the bride and groom tables are, I mean, that's, all that area behind there is all office space that is not used for the public use of the business, is my understanding. But they're putting, they're putting the soundproofing on the exterior walls behind that office space.
So, there's the exterior wall with the soundproofing, then the office, and then the sound system that's facing...
Correct, that would be, that would be...
Forward, facing 56th Street.
I don't know how they plan on doing that. We discussed that at the last meeting, but there was never determination that whether or not we could put that as a condition.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Chambers?
Thank you. Back to the soundproofing, it's going on the exterior wall?
Yeah, it's going to be in the interior of the building.
Interior of the exterior.
Interior, interior around the entire unit except for in the front.
Okay, and you've, someone has seen it to know what the decibel rating it would be knocking it down?
Yes, I browbeat him, and he finally submitted it. No, I asked him to give me the information, and Amir has looked at the information as submitted, so it does meet the code.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions for staff? Mr. Carpus, when you say...
Attorney has a point.
Yes?
I would suggest one question for Mr. Sullivan as the representative that council make of him. It's simply, have you read or heard all of the conditions that are being recommended by staff, and is your client agreeable to them?
Mr. Sullivan, did you hear that? Have you read?
The client is agreeable to it.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Attorney. Mr. Carpus, when, back to the soundproofing material, when you say that the building official has looked at it... When you say that the building official has looked at it and it meets code, explain what you mean by that, because that means it...
Well, he's looking at specification.
Let me finish the question. So that means that it meets the building code. That doesn't necessarily attest to its sound dampening properties, am I correct?
I guess, I don't know. Yeah, you are correct.
So when you say it meets code, though, it seems to imply that...
To get a building permit, it would. But he did submit the information with the decibel ratings and all that stuff. That's a good question.
Very good. Thank you. Other questions for either the applicant or our staff? Are there members of the public who wish to comment on this? Yes, I do have one request from Mrs. Rennie, who is duly sworn in. Wait, hold on, Ms. Rennie. I'm not sure what's going on here. Okay, I have a written request for Ms. Rennie, so she's first, so.
Annette Rennie, 9512 Woodland Ridge Drive. And all of you know that I am a real estate agent. People purchase homes back in Pleasant Terrace because they like the lots, they like the privacy. It is a beautiful area. Those people pay property taxes. This venue is way too close to the homes. I mean, it is unfair to them. We all remember when the amphitheater had to put in soundproofing because you could hear it in Temple Terrace, the bass. You could hear it anyplace, and they had to go in and adjust. When you're playing music and it's going till 10, 11, 12 at night, how do you think those people who are paying property taxes are going to feel? And I heard at the last time, you know, it was compared to, we gave a variance to the office building. But an office building is something you drive up, you park, you get out. In the morning, you go in, you go to work, you're not drinking alcohol, you're not playing music loud, and then you leave. And then it was compared again to another issue down the street. But that person who owns the place has an independent building with an entire lot behind it, and the only music that comes from there is guitar on the deck. But it's not even close to what we're looking at now. And these people on that street have beautiful homes with lots. And if they're wanting to be in their backyard with their families and they're hearing this music, which you will, that bass can carry through any kind of soundproofing, it is just unfair and not something we should be accepting or giving a variance or permitting. It's just not correct. And there's no way to control somebody with alcohol. You know, Chief, that people leave and they're drinking, and you don't have any control of how much they're drinking or what's going to happen or how the music is going to flow. Are we going to be sending our police officers there every couple of weeks because of something? No, please, I beg of you, do not do this to the citizens who pay taxes and live behind there. It's wrong. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rennie. I think there were other people that, I just want to remind everybody that we have to remain quiet while somebody is speaking, okay? We all have to do that, so. Good evening.
Good evening. It's already past my bedtime. My house is smack dab at the back of this.
I'm sorry, ma'am, could you, we could start the time over, and could you please state your name?
My name is Elena Ennis. This is my husband, Richard. About 10 years ago, we built our forever retirement home smack dab at the back of this. But from the upstairs in my house, I can see that building, people going back and forth at the back. For something, a business to be allowed to operate till 12:30 midnight, where people are having alcohol, whether they bring their own or what they do, wandering there, the fence on some parts is just wooden, can fall down, you know? Lights, whatever is going on in there. Yeah, unless there's a police there every night, they have something to keep it quiet and for order. It's a disservice to me. What am I supposed to do? You know, if Temple Terrace would pay me the value of my house, I'd be happy to move and let them have their business. But I cannot live there with that going on. It's not fair to me. My daughter would be next door at 12907. I'm 12903. That's, you know, it just worries me. It stresses me out to think that that can happen because I'm stuck. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Other members of the public who wish to address, you'll be last, but are there other members of the public who wish to address this item? Okay, Mr. Sullivan, you have the last word.
Again, my name is Perry Sullivan. And I think this is being overamplified. What are you going to get out of it? We're not going to have any more amplified music after 10 o'clock. And there's no alcohol consumption outside of these walls. And the seating is not going to be more than 50 people. So I think your concerns, although valid, are not going to be... You're not going to have this violated from how we're going to use this space. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Now, close the public hearing. Council members, is there a motion? Council members, one more time, is there a motion?
This is a tough one.
Okay, I'll make a motion. Okay, I'll make a motion. I move to not permit the waiver and not issue the conditional use permit for the property based upon noise issues and concerns with neighbors living behind it that fall within the 200-foot setback as per our ordinance.
So there's a motion for nonapproval of the waivers.
Correct.
Is there a second?
A second, huh?
Motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion? I'd like to say a few comments. We had extensive discussion about this at the last meeting, and I wish that the applicant were here. This council is very, I don't want to speak for you, don't let me put words in your mouth, but this council is very pro-business. And we're very, I don't want to say lenient. I think we're very liberal in granting waivers where the codes don't make sense because our city was built years ago, and sometimes we have conflicts. And we recognize that sometimes the letters of the codes don't quite match what's really going on. In this particular case, in my opinion, our code serves us well, and our rules are good rules. If there were one home that were just barely inside the limit or something, I don't think we'd be having much of a discussion. But there are six. And three of those are, it's the structure itself is less than 200 feet, not the property line. And so I feel that the people, these neighbors and the others that are impacted potentially by this have a reasonable expectation that this council will enforce its own rules and not allow this to happen. I feel a little bad for the applicant because we want to attract businesses, particularly local, homegrown, individual-owned businesses. We like that. We encourage that. This is just a square peg in a round hole. It's just the wrong location. And so I will support this motion, although it's, I don't take any pleasure in doing that, but I think it's the right thing to do. Yeah, well, let's see if there's others first, because you made the motion. Other comments on the motion? Councilmember Abel, I'll come back to you.
I just want to say that I'm really pleased at what the applicant has done to try to fit this into this situation. And I really wanted it to work. I really wanted it to work. But seeing how we've already signaled, and also hearing from the neighbor, who, this is the first time I've heard from you, and what you say counts, it matters to me. I'm really sad that we can't have this. But I do appreciate all that they've done to make it work. And, you know, I think that, I think that I'm still in favor of it. It doesn't matter at this point, but I'm in favor of it. And I appreciate the efforts and the fact that we would have had this business here.
Are there other comments on the motion? Other discussion on the motion? Mr. Schuster, back to you then.
Very briefly, I too echo the same sentiments that, you know, it's pro-business. We want business. We want local business. We want, we want these types of things in town. But again, square peg, round hole, doesn't fit. And we feel badly that they've already done as much work as they've done on it. But it's, doesn't, it doesn't preclude, and this asking for forgiveness doesn't preclude the circumstances that present to the neighbors behind it and everybody in the area, and it just, it just, it just doesn't fit.
Seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify with aye. Aye. Opposed? One nay, but councilmember Abel, motion is approved to deny the waivers. Okay, council business. Is there carryover council business from previous meetings? Seeing none, new business board reports. Council members, any new business? Mr. Schuster.
I just would like to give a brief explanation as to the Coach Reams being here. Anybody who was in the Greco area on Saturday probably would have seen an incredible number of people that were on the field. And I just happened to be going down to walk on the track at about 7:30 that night. He was still there cleaning up. So I asked him, you know, was it a successful endeavor for the day? I've no clue what it was because we didn't go there, but there's just a ton of people there. And he started telling me what he's doing and the projects that he has going on. And I told him, I said, it sounds like something that we might possibly want to incorporate with the city and get together. I don't know what could be done, but it was worth a shot. And I had recommended that he come to council and introduce himself to everybody, and then possibly hook him up with Carl and the city manager. Is there something that we can do on a community-wide basis? I don't know, but this is why he was here. And he seemed to have a very interesting organization, and it was just an incredible afternoon. I mean, there were a ton of people down there. I'd never seen that many people down there at one given time, even more, even more so than the Relay for Life. There wasn't that many people. So that's the genesis of where he kind of just appeared out of nowhere for this. But hopefully, I gave his, I gave his city manager's name to him and Carl's, and hopefully, there's, if there's anything to be done, great. If not, great. But it's, we should, we need to showcase the things that we have going on in the city. I think he did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that to the table, Mr. Schuster. Any other new business or board reports? Councilmember Abel.
I'd like to request a presentation from our recycling partner, West Rock, at an upcoming council meeting because I have some unanswered questions about their recycling process once our trucks get to their company. When I requested the contract from Mr. Stevenson, he told me that he didn't have it on hand because it's under review from their corporate offices. And to me, this is a big red flag because if we have a service that has an active contract that's not readily available for me or anyone in the community to view, that's a problem. And I think that all of us here, as well as the public, want to be aware of what we are doing with recyclables so that we have transparency and because recycling is so important to the people of Temple Terrace.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yeah, the contract that Ms. Abel's talking about is the contract to receive our recycles. We have in the past had basically just a handshake and a smile, but with what's been happening with the glass commodity, we've asked West Rock, which is the name of the company, to provide us with some kind of written agreement so that we know moving forward what the conditions are, them taking our recycles. And at the same time, it makes them commit to taking them for a specific period of time so that we can plan ahead. We have been trying to get this agreement through corporate. This is a big corporation. We haven't been very successful trying to get this thing. But Mr. LeBlanc was copied on the email that I responded to Ms. Abel about and immediately called the company. We're trying to get it. So we're doing our best to try to get this. In the meantime, they're taking our recycles, okay? This is the company that has taken our cardboard. They pay us for cardboard. We do get a little bit of money from cardboard. And by them paying and taking cardboard, they're taking plastic and metals, so. Soon as I get the agreement, I'd be more than happy to share it with you. This is a company we've been using for a long time, so.
How long?
For three years that I know of, since I've been here. This is where our recycles have gone.
Could we get a representative from their company to come here and answer questions?
Sure, absolutely. We'd be more than happy to get them here.
Thank you.
Other new business or board reports? Mr. Chambers?
Yeah, thank you. You know, this more, a little while ago, we got a proclamation on National Water Safety Month, and a lot of opportunities for swim lessons was mentioned. But the biggest one we have in our city is the rec center. And, you know, the new playbook has aquatics right on the cover. And I know they teach a lot of children every summer to swim, so check out the rec center. How was it?
Very good. Thank you. Other new business or board reports? I have one quick thing, mostly for the public, but for you guys, I think you probably already know this, but the, what's previously been called the MPO, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, is now known as the TPO, the Transportation Planning Organization. We changed the name. The board voted to change the name to better describe its mission, so you don't have to explain what the MPO does. It's in its name now. The big annual meeting to approve the modifications to the Transportation Improvement Plan, normally called the TIP. That meeting occurs in June every year, and this year it's June 9th. It's set for the evening. It begins at 6:00 p.m. because a lot of people call in, or a lot of people attend, and it usually generates a lot of public interest. And it would take me a long time to explain everything, and I would probably goof it up. But there's Table 1, Table 2, and Table 3 for projects. Table 1 are those projects that are already funded. In fact, in many cases, construction's already underway. Table 2 are those projects that are kind of, there's a placeholder for future funding as Table 1 projects get completed. And then Table 3 is very, very long because Table 3 includes even like our local things that we're going to do that we're just going to pay for out of city funds. They put all that on Table 3 just so somebody could go to one place and see all the transportation projects. So the reason I tell you this is so that you know, and our public knows, that June 9th at 6:00 p.m. is that meeting, which is very significant because that's when the board votes to approve the modifications to the TIP for the next fiscal year. So for those interested in the public, that's an important meeting to attend or to comment on. I do want to tell the board, or council, not the board, I'm getting, the council and the public that since I've been serving on the now TPO, it has been my emphasis all along to champion multimodal bike pedestrian links, particularly between here and USF and Uptown, but to link with Tampa's Greenspine project that they have in the east over to the bypass canal. And so I don't want future people to be sitting here eight or 10 years from now, and we're surrounded by trails, and we're not connected to any of them. So I have been very vocal with the Department of Transportation, the TPO, the County Commission, the County Administrator about Temple Terrace wants to be in the trail business. We need to, we need to be multimodal, especially to USF. I, to reinforce our link to USF as a resident... To reinforce our link to USF as a residential community for USF affiliates, to get that safe biking back and forth. The hardest part of that puzzle is getting across Fowler Avenue. We can do a lot of it just with the city money alone. So anyway, that meeting, not to go on too long, but that meeting is June 9th at 6 o'clock. A lot going on, we've actually gotten some traction, some of our projects are now on the lists, right? They're not on...
Where's the meeting?
Where?
It is, well, let me, I think it's at the county center, but they're still doing hybrid, so I don't know if the public can actually come there or not. I don't know the answer to that. But we're gaining traction, we are getting good conversations with the Department of Transportation, with TPO, with the county, so we're plugging away. Yeah, we're plugging away, so.
Thank you for your effort.
And that's all, I thank you, that's all I have. City managers report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a couple items to bring before council. Obviously, with COVID restrictions kind of easing up, and one of the things that we haven't done for some time is to hold a town hall meeting, which is probably one of those things I think Mr. Mayor and I have talked about in the last couple of months, and we were a little hesitant with the restrictions that we had. I do think with some of the easing up of those restrictions, it's probably time to do that. With council's permission, what I'd like to do is kind of look at our calendars and see if we can do something in June, and possibly put together some kind of agenda to bring some of this stuff back to the public on a town hall meeting. We can hold this at Lightfoot, we've got audio systems and audio/video systems, a little bit better than what we did last year, that's where some of COVID money has gone. So I think that we can probably put on a good meeting over there. So what I'd like to do is kind of reach out to each of you. I know we've gotten vacation schedules from everybody, we'll certainly try to find a date that would work for everybody so that we can have a full council there, so.
Let me make a comment. Representative Fintris Friskel reached out to me this week asking if she could have a town hall meeting, so let's not have two. Let's see if we can incorporate, she wants to explain to us all the different things that have just been signed as bills and what have you to the public, and since she is our representative for our area, might not be a bad idea, but I want to hook her up with you so that y'all can talk about it. I'm going to send her to you, but I'll send it to...
If you could get me her contact information, we'd be more than happy to kind of schedule something and include her in the meeting, so.
I would, personally, I'd prefer that to be a separate meeting, we're getting, this is going to be a long meeting, we haven't had a town hall meeting in a year and a half. We've got a lot of city stuff to talk about, that's going to turn into, I mean, it's a great idea, I'd love to, I'll come to the meeting.
If you want to have two, that's fine, but...
Yeah, that's going to be too much for one, that's going to be a four-hour meeting.
Okay.
But to do her justice...
Yeah, oh, she may not be interested in pairing up with us.
Yeah, 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 because I just think that's too much for one.
Let's see, get me her contact...
We've had none, and now we're going to have two.
Yeah, get me her contact information, we'll see what kind of agenda she wants to put together, and see if she would like to do one co-joinly or separately, whatever, whatever you guys wish, I'm open for whatever you guys, direction you give me.
I think it's her own, I mean, I'll attend it, I think she...
I think it's time that we get back out and start doing regular town hall meetings. We had done them for a while, and routinely had done them, not that we've got, we got away from primarily because of COVID, so.
Hundred percent because of COVID. We were doing them pretty regularly.
Is that acceptable to you?
Absolutely, absolutely, I just wanted you to know that that just happened, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are we good with the potential in June to do a town hall meeting at the Lightfoot Center?
We'll see, we'll see what schedules are, and then we'll kind of contact each of you.
You've got the head nod, go ahead.
The other discussion point that we probably need to have is that the American Rescue Plan is quickly coming upon us. There have been numerous webinars and conversations that I've been involved with, with other city managers. The uses and the prohibited uses are becoming very clear, and one of those things that we need to do is start to get with council and find out what council would like to give us direction on as far as starting to look at spending some of this money, or allotting some of this money to projects. I'm working with Mr. Tinch right now to look at some infrastructure projects that we would not normally be able to get done because of funding. Again, scheduling could be a problem, but one of the things that we have with the contract that you guys just approved with four paving companies is beneficial to us, because now we can also look at availability of contractors. So we probably need to schedule something to start discussing how to allocate those funds, and I guess my question is, is do you want to do that in a town hall setting, or would you rather do that at a workshop?
Well, I'm confused. At our meeting that we had to discuss the American Rescue Act, I thought we had asked you to explore two basic strategies. One of them was essentially to accelerate our capital improvement plan.
Right.
And the other one was to explore the feasibility of major rehabilitation of the Public Works Building to solve our police department problem. But we don't have, and I thought that we were going to get some recommendations on which was more feasible than the others, so that we could then make a decision, but if we get together in a workshop to now talk about accelerating the capital, I think that takes away, we could have done that a month ago, well, not a month, but whenever we met. Did I misunderstand the results of that, or...
Maybe, maybe I've missed something.
I thought we asked you to explore those two possibilities. One was to see if 11.2 million, well, it wouldn't be 11.2, because we're going to recapture lost revenue first. If the leftover after we capture lost revenue was going to be enough money to provide us with a usable police station, isn't that what we, I thought that's what we talked about.
I've missed that direction, and apologize.
Okay.
We'll put, we'll put some analysis together and present that to you. Then you want to, then you want to schedule a workshop based on what we get?
Yeah, yeah, but we wanted to, yes.
Specific one, though, with more information, so that we can go beyond what we did last time. And we've all been invited to this workshop coming up by the National League of Cities. Hopefully, we'll be attending some of those. I registered for that, so.
That's on Thursday afternoon, if I'm not mistaken.
I think every time we hear more, we think of ideas, but that is exactly where we are.
I just got some more information from Senator Rubio's office today as well. It has 18 pages of FAQs, which are great to read, because it really kind of gets away from all the, that bill language that's built in that you kind of have a tendency to lose track of, so I'll share that with you tomorrow, I made myself a note to do that. But I will get back on track here, I apologize, I maybe missed a step here.
Okay, well, I didn't say that to beat you up, I just thought that was where we wound up, I didn't know if maybe I misunderstood, but, okay.
Okay. Other thing is that we're moving full, with 4th of July activities, start getting the word out on your end that we're looking for participants in the parade, and certainly we're looking to have a great evening of fireworks.
Yes, we are.
Start getting the word out and spread the word, I know Carl and his group's been working, working pretty hard to kind of get things organized, so we're trying to do the best we can, but certainly getting word out there from council certainly helps as well, so.
The hard part is not saying 4th of July, since it's on the 3rd.
I'm sorry, 3rd of July, 4th of July activities.
Independence Day.
On July 3rd.
Anything else, Mr. Stevenson?
That's it, thank you, sir.
That's it, very good, thank you. Sidie Attorney?
Thank you. First, I wanted to mention that the transportation surtax case is, the motion made by the government defendants is scheduled to be heard by the court on June 22nd. The motion presents some procedures for the judge to possibly approve for allowing the taxpayers to make application for a refund of taxes they may have paid. It sets forth a procedure that involves a three former, three former judges serving on a panel to consider the claims that might be filed. So I'll let you know how, what happens after June 22nd on that one. I know a question had come up before and mentioned in, I think in one of the newspapers is, why is Temple Terrace not a defendant? To refresh your memory, the city of Temple Terrace was initially named as a defendant, we filed a motion to be dismissed on certain grounds that, because it was a declaratory judgment action, you have to have a present conflict with the defendants that you name. And I told the judge at the time that the plaintiff has never even contacted us to see if there is any conflict with us, and then the plaintiff recognized right away that they hadn't done that, they don't really have a conflict they can point to with us, and voluntarily dismissed us from the lawsuit. We have been involved, though, throughout, I've attended the hearings, initially it was in person in court, I was there all day, and then it became Zoom hearings, and this particular hearing is all, on the 22nd, is also going to be by Zoom. So if you have any questions with regard to that, give me a call, send me an email, and if you're interested in seeing the motion that was filed, to read it yourself, I can provide you with a copy of that. Secondly, I know that I've probably mentioned this to maybe you on an individual basis, I don't remember whether I have told you this during a meeting, but our tree-cutting prosecution case that the Code Enforcement Board heard and found the property owner in violation, that case was appealed. I was expecting the brief to come soon. The defendant has just hired new counsel, and he contacted me yesterday and requested an extension of time because he just got hired and he'd already scheduled a vacation with his child. So it's common to show that courtesy to opposing counsel, and so after I discussed it with him today, I granted him his, I didn't grant, I agreed, I agreed to his request for an extension, and then he needs to file with the court and ask them to grant that This is now obviously outside of the purview of the Code Enforcement Board, it is in litigation, I may be coming back to you if there's some offer from them on settlement of this. Third is, our Scrivener's Air Ordinance has been put to its first test, and so I've given you all a copy of the resolution that the clerk has made some corrections to after consultation with the city attorney's office, and we had agreed that these be made, and that they, and they have been made, so we're letting you know what those changes are. You'll see that the things that have been highlighted in yellow are things that have been removed. The first one was in the title of the resolution, and the word budget was misspelled, so that's been corrected. In the second whereas clause, a comma was put in that has now been removed, so if it's highlighted in yellow, it's gone, if it's in green, it's been added. So in the fourth whereas clause, we've added two commas, and then going down to the first paragraph in the now therefore section, again, comma was removed. Shouldn't put a comma between a subject and a verb, so. And as a former English teacher, those things bother me. You might think that that is petty, but...
We have some schoolteachers on the council, they don't think it's petty.
So for the sentence to read correctly, I removed the comma there, so that's it.
Thank you for telling us, we don't have to do anything, you're just telling us.
I'm, we've already done it, and pursuant to the ordinance that you passed on Scrivener's Errors, we were required to let you know what changes have been made promptly, so I'm letting you know.
There are other business to come before the council tonight. Mr. Stevenson, attorney, directors, members of the public, council members, seeing none, we are adjourned.